They were, or they coming lower, whatever those numbers are, you have cash on hand to get this project, which you all have identified as a priority off your plate. There's likely to be some dollars left over after this bid is potentially awarded. What you do with those dollars still has to be intentional because they're bond dollars. And so if you go to street projects, you could put it into something related to the street facility. You know, we have a couple of major road projects, 31st and 3rd, that funding has not been identified for at this point, which you could apply those dollars to. We don't have true cost estimates on that yet. As it relates to the fire station, identifying a location is top priority. And Don and the Hulkburst Department have been working pretty hard on trying to identify city-owned land that would be suitable, which would definitely minimize costs. You know, utilizing our own land versus spending half a million to a million dollars on the site. Again, I want to keep a high level because sometimes what you say gets taken as gospel and things can change between now and then. But there's some land out by the ice arena that could be really good for an east side fire station if we're able to improve 31st and 3rd, which we need to be considering anyway. So in my opinion, it's a good way to start the domino effect of getting some of these other things in line. Now, the street facility, we know is a big number, 20-plus million. And that's still in design, but they're still doing the formal estimating. Once that comes back, I think maybe here at the end of this month or early next month, we can start looking at funding options. And maybe it's phasing, maybe it's saying, hey, we're going to hold off until interest rates go back down. Or, hey, we want to pursue a general obligation bond. Those are all conversations that you guys are going to have to have. We can provide the information. One of the challenges that I have seen in my short time here with the City Hall Street Facility project is we keep trying to figure out how to get them both done with the same dollars that were issued in 2021. And I think we're applying work. They both are critical, but that's no longer a viable option to do them together. It just doesn't work. And so I think this is the right move forward. And it keeps those other projects moving forward rather than all three of them stagnating. Because that's kind of where we're at right now, is trying to decide, oh, what do we do first? Well, we got the money to do this. And we can't spend the $10 million on the fire station because of one of the bonded for that. So that ties our hands together. And the others.
On that point, I mean, theoretically, can we put them on the 10 million to our streets? And then what is in the capital approval? Four streets next couple of years, then use that for an east fire station or any other project? Is that, is that the option that's on the table?
Yeah, I think you could. You could shift dollars around the mechanics of that. I would let Kristin speak to that. But you'll remember that, I mean, we don't have, we don't budget $10 million annually for street projects.
Like we've got 24 months, I think.
Yeah, I have it up here. Let me pull it up real quick. The sulfur, the bond, we have to spend another 1.7 million of it by June of 2024. And the remaining 7.3 million has to be spent by May of 2025.
What was the first number you said, like June?
1.7, 1.6 and a half.
I may not mean to play, that's what I want to be honest with you. Just trying to think of all the options. Because I do, for me personally, I do feel like each fire station is a priority for this community. And so even with this City Hall project, and we haven't really discussed where our cap, what our number is that we want to, that we don't want to go over, you know, on the bids. We're kind of assuming where they may come in. But if there is money in this, in this bond left, you talk about the east fire station. No matter what, it's going to be somewhere in that, you mentioned by the ice arena or somewhere in that neighborhood. It would tell me that it's imperative that one or both of those streets, 3rd, 31st, or maybe just one of them, it'd be very advantageous to have those done correctly. You'd have them paying, had them properly infrastructure set. So even about, even though, we know where the property is going to go theoretically. So then it's, we've got to have the infrastructure. So then for me personally, give the people those directions. I before, let's sort of have the same conversation, using some money for getting infrastructure even set for fire department, for our community, so we can have that, that in place. So we don't have that issue five years, four years. So that's just where I'm thinking out loud here.
Yeah. And I don't disagree with you. If that's the direction you want to go, I think that makes a lot of sense. Like I said, I'm hesitant to give numbers because we don't know our numbers, what those costs are going to be. We can reasonably assume that we would not spend all of what's available on the City Hall remodel. I think that's fair to assume. But whatever's left, we don't know. We don't know how far that will go. But also I want to remind you all that the east side fire station is in the long-term plan. You know, it's currently in year three, is that right?
27.
27, 2027. So it is in the plan. And if we continue to move forward with these things, and you know, to your point, if we've got, let's say, $3 million left, or you can ship from the CIP and put it into some kind of reserve cash account for Rhodes East Side Fire Station. I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do to continue to build momentarily. And so you get to a point where you either have cash saved for it or you're comfortable issuing additional debt to complete that project. So, but those are, to have that detailed discussion now, we just, we just can't. We don't have all of that information, other than you've said City Hall, street facility, and fire station are priorities. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Some specifics to that. Councilman Shuddy, the cost estimate for the street facility is being updated as we speak. RJM, our CMAR on that project is working with JLG, our architects, and refining the earlier cost estimates. JLG's passed it, isn't what they call the design development phase. They're moving into the construction docs, the final plans and specs for potential bidding. So now where they're at that breaking point is also where the CMAR is able to take what was established through the design development phase. They've got a lot more specifics to work with. They can go in and sharpen their estimates that they gave us, given to us earlier on in the process. I'm expecting that number towards the end of January, I think the 18th or 19th. RJM is estimating to have that to us by. And then subsequent to that is when we would also, that'll be great timing, I think, with the potential awarding of a bid with this project. Once we get through February bid advertisement, bid opening, and then March, we're going to have some more detailed numbers on the street facility, likely continue the discussion.
Thank you. Well, a couple of comments. See, there's, we know a lot more today than we did a year and a half or two years, or three years ago. The whole notion that we bought this building and then we haven't done anything with it. Well, we all know why that's happened. And it's important to understand what the environment's done because of COVID. So we're sitting here with the bonded dollars that are, have their sets of rules of how we can spend that money. But what we do know is, we know we can't afford, as we said today, we can't afford a brand-new City Hall somewhere. We know today we can't afford to build the street department in totality, right? We know we can't, we can't build the east fire station today. But what we do know is, we own a building. And I think it's important that, that the coming deadlines per se from, from the bonding, maybe it helped push us a little bit. But the decision that I see coming, at least from my perspective, is that to me, it's a responsible direction. That is a very good building. That will last this city for a long time by investors, whatnot. We've looked at a lot of different options, which I think was necessitated by just the costs. And in the end, it was probably a good thing. But I really do believe, I think it's important that the urgency here today is that we really, we've had a number of tours through there, had others come in, take a look at it, and had some discussions on different perspectives, also from the architecture and engineering side. We think we're in a position to, to cost reduce it and get better quotes on a building we already own. That's right across the lot, so to speak. I think it's a very responsible decision, moving in that direction from a facility standpoint. And I also believe it's that way financially for where we sit. And Councilman, I understand where you'd like to go, but the Mac is correct. We've got to get one of them off our plate, and it's, it is a needed item. And then things will start to clear up for us, I think, once we, once we see that and once we can then start prioritizing. But to get them all done, it's going to require dollars somewhere. And let's just get this one off the, off the platter, so to speak. And how we go about doing that is a whole new deal yet. But I think it's a very worthy project where we're at. I think it'll be a nice project when we're done, and it'd be responsibly done financially and structurally.
Councilman Piers.
Totally agree with Councilman Danforth. But just for maybe a point of clarity, as we talk about next steps, where we go from here. So the goal would be for us to give you guys the nod to move forward, clean things up, and take it up to bid almost, if you're correct. I mean, that's essentially what we're looking for here.
So, yes, you've given us the direction to rebid it. What we're looking for clarity on is if the modifications that we have proposed to you all make sense. If you're good with that, then we will give direction to TSP and they'll get the documents out as soon as they can.
Well, from what I'm hearing, we don't have time to sit here and deliberate. So, thanks, our answer pretty easy.
You've got about six more minutes.
Councilman.
Bueller, you better talk fast, Bueller.
Thank you, Devin.
For you, you've got seven.
Thank you. Bonus. No, just a couple of questions. I know one of the bigger costs we're looking at was the electrical. And I think a big part of that is the panel that they have to replace. Could you tell us what the rationale is for that one more time?
Yeah, absolutely. And since Carly's on the line, maybe I just hand you the time right over to her because to make use of her time and talk more, tell us things I can about the matter.
Yeah, absolutely. So based on the code requirements for how to calculate demand, adding the existing demand and then all the newly added equipment and receptacles, we are over that 800 amp capacity of the switchboard. So that's why we had to replace it and increase the services.
Now, Carly, is that with the idea that we're going to supply the addition with power from that panel?
Yes.
Is it feasible or code-wise, could we put a separate panel in, into the addition? And leave there alone?
Right. Code only allows one service per building with some exceptions. But talking to Rex, it sounds like there's not a building separation between the addition and the existing Wells Fargo building. And it sounds like there's not a feasible way to not lose square footage from that addition, adding in that building separation to get a second service.
So that hallway then would not constitute a separation? Is that, because that's the only thing that's connecting that to the main building, is that little hallway?
I'll expound on that from a, from a building standpoint. We would, to get two separated buildings, we either have to have distance or rated assemblies. I think in the final analysis previously, as we were going to proceed with a sprinkler system that would constitute this to be considered a single building, we are only set off from, the addition is only set off from the existing building by about eight feet. And at a bare minimum, we should probably be a little bit over 10 feet because of code-required fire separation distances. And we would have to introduce, you know, more rating along the, that west side of the addition for the separation. So just, you know, offsetting those, you know, we, we, to get there, we're going to lose a little bit over two feet in the width of the building, east to west. And we're already pretty tight, well, we are tight between the conference room and the council chambers. That's what kind of set our width as it was. And we have no room to move any closer to the drive-through. That's already set up in that same fashion to where we have fire separation distance established on that side of the building.
And then, sorry, Rex, I did forget to, I should have led with this. Even taking the load of the addition off of the service for the existing building, we're still not under that 800 amp capacity.
And that's because of additional outlets, or what is that? I know we're going to, we're going to go to LED lighting throughout the facility, which I would think would draw a lot less current.
They already have LED fluorescent replacement bulbs installed in a majority of their fixtures. The added loads, I could break them out for you, but there's a pretty good-sized electric duct coil. And then there is a lot more open office furniture and printers. The IT area has a lot more demand than is existing for outlets. Yes, they added outlets and everything adds up.
Okay, well, the reason I brought it up, it says $700,000, was what we saw in the bid for that. And that number, if I could, Councilman.
That number, that was the entire electrical bid that was broke out at that time. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a guess on the golly, how much of that is that electric service panel versus all the other electrical stuff throughout the building? Because there were some other pretty significant electrical costs within that $700,000. It'd be a guess on mine to tell you the service panel was this much of the 700.
And then, just one, sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry. I did look at the means. So what we would expect for an estimate of a 1,200 amp distribution panel, and it was in the 15,000 to $20,000 range. Does not include like demolition of that existing service, but.
Then just another, a question I guess I have, is the roof part, the replacement of the roof. And I know somehow they're going to tie in with the addition. But I just don't see, and I, I don't believe the roof is in bad shape. I don't know that eventually, certainly, it would have to be reshingled in the diaphragm, whatever you call it, in the center portion. But to me, I think the roof's in pretty good shape. Ted, I think you and I had a discussion about that here recently.
Yes, we did talk about that. Rex actually was up on the roof back when we were doing design and site verification of it. I can let Rex talk to his observations up there. But, and I think, yeah, go ahead.
There, there were two considerations previously in the approach on this. One, yes, we, we did have opportunity to be up on the roof and on close inspection of the, the shingles. There are fixtures in cracking, which would be evidence of getting to their end of life. And I believe there was a, I might don't recall the exact date off the top of my head, but I thought the replacement may have occurred back in 1998. So that would support some of the, the age issue. Also, during the design discussions, there was an element expressed to have, you know, the addition should be aesthetically tying into the existing. So that would lend itself to wanting to update the roof, shingles in this project to maintain the aesthetic street view of the facility as, as more of a comprehensive, single component from that standpoint. So the aesthetic request that was made during design, as well as actual visual inspection up on the roof and the anticipated date of the last replacement, all led to the consideration to replace the existing shingles and such within the project.
I think it's, you know, to the point, these are all very, very great questions. But in the bidding world that we're in right now, or timeframe we're in right now, I think we really need to lean on the expertise of the engineers and the architects and staff to raise back some plans that, that we're ready to go to bid with. I mean, at that point, we're either going to be ready or not.
Boy, I just have a point of clarification. I've been operating that we're going to have this discussion, you're going to give us the nod, we're going to go bid it, and we're going to bring the bids back. Are you saying you want us to bring the plans back to you before committed? Okay. That's what I'm trying to.
Thank you. You know, like I say, I think it's time that we rely on the professionals. You know, whether or not it's the fire suppression system, or the electrical panel, or whatever. We're council people. We're not experts in, I don't know, many of us that are engineers or.
That's an engineer, right? Self-proclaimed engineer. I am as well. I have a comment to make when you're done.
Okay. So, I mean, with that, that's all I was going to leave it at. I think it's time to decide whether or not we give a nod, move forward with this project. Councilman Dings.
I'm with you, Randy. I'm ready to see the bids. I'm also with Councilman Shuddy on, you know, the need of the garage. I think the public will want some input. And we can rely on a fire suppression system, we can rely on a garage, and we can rely on experts telling us that we need these things. But in the end, I believe we have to be the eyes and the ears for our community to build that trust to, let's, let's now see it.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you. But we also have to rely on the experts. If somebody tells me it's got to have a regular system all the way through, I got to rely on them because I'm looking out for the public. Whether or not the public agrees with that or not, I got to listen to the experts. But thank you.
I just want to provide a couple of comments. First, back to the fire station. One significant matter that has to be figured out with the fire station is the staffing plan for it. If we were to build a full-fledged east side fire station, which I think is the desire of the, of the fire chief and long-term, I think is where we need to go. You know, I think that requires the addition of six. Oh, oh. We're going to stick with six, maybe nine.
Six is the minimum, nine to be.
New fire protection teams. And that is, you know, a minimum $600,000 to the general fund in personnel costs. So there's, there is that, that has to be figured out while we are going on the path of how we're going to build this. As a relief to the garage. I think it's easy for people to say, we don't need a garage. We built an enclosed garage at wastewater for their vehicles. We have built an enclosed garage at the airport for their vehicles. We have staff at City Hall who are in and out of their vehicles all day, every day. Doing inspections, out on projects, out on sites. And in conditions like this, you're letting vehicles sit for 20 or 30 minutes to de-ice. And it, so one, it comes down to, you know, just efficiency, right? Like we can be more efficient. Is it going to house every City Hall vehicle? No, but we can be strategic about what goes in there based off of where the needs are. So I think that those are good conversations to have. But it's certainly, the need is there based off of operations. Otherwise, I don't think we would have, we would have requested it, you know? So anyway, just a couple of points for further discussion as, as we get there. But the staffing plan for the fire station really, really is, in my opinion, the holdup. We can find a location, bond for it, but how are we going to staff it appropriately?
That's been the major question for many, many years. So, Councilman Danforth, or, excuse me, Bueller?
Yeah, Bueller.
You guys look so much alike.
Wait a minute, I don't necessarily appreciate that.
I don't know, looks at the board.
I can make a motion, all discussions cease.
No, I would say I'm, I'm in support of this. I have been from the time we decided to purchase the building. And, you know, the thing, some of the nice things about doing this is, is the fact that we've got a building in place. It's on property, it's downtown, we own it. We don't have to buy property, we search around for property anymore. We've already paid probably a couple hundred thousand dollars or more in architecture fees, which covers probably the lion's share of what we need to do at the site. Unless you guys want to try to slide another couple hundred thousand dollars. Do the changes. But, you know, and that keeps us from having to do that again from the facility. But I think it's a great building, I've been all through it, I've been in this, up in the attic a couple times. And it's, it's solid, you know? And HVAC system is in good shape. So I think this is absolutely the right way to go.
And I agree, get this thing done. Councilman Piers closing comments?
Yeah, I would just say to round things out, thanks to the staff for hanging with us here. It's, it was a good discussion. And for all the reasons everybody's mentioned, I firmly believe that this is the right path. As it relates to the fire station, I think by the time we get this up and running, the ice rink's up and running, it'd be a great time, and 2027 is at that point away. So I do think that this makes sense. But I would like to know, who's letting their vehicle back for 30 minutes to de-ice?
I cannot be held to any numbers I've said. High-level discussion, Councilwoman Peters, high-level discussion.
I want to go back to the, to the method that, that I think. Are we going to still, in some of this, as we prepare, we're still going to have certain items listed as alternatives, so that we understand what we might be able to, or have to carve out, correct?
Well, that's the point of clarity I was going to ask for. If the council wants to specifically give us direction on, yes, do this as an alternate, that as an alternate, this as an alternate, we can do that. Or if you want to give us free rein and latitude to work with TSP to figure out what that best bid package scenario looks like so that we, as a team, are thinking it's going to give us the most bang for our buck in presenting it. The reason I'm saying is, that I'm not saying, yes, let's do alternates, A, B, C, D, whatever. The more complexities we put into the bid itself, it naturally drives our costs up because it creates some, some confusion, some unknowns. Some bidders don't necessarily have the time to dig into all the details of what this alternate might be versus that one. And so they just kind of throw a little bigger number at it, is what typically happens. So if we can come into this next bid as simple as possible for the bidders, that's going to help our pricing tremendously too. That's not saying that the garage isn't an easy bid alternate, it can be done that way. The bid schedules we talked about earlier can be done. But is, is the juice worth the squeeze, so to speak? Or should we just package this up comprehensively in a simple way that makes the bids come in the best way possible?
Kind of follow-up on that. Couple things. Is there, I, there hasn't been any discussion today about what the non-building exterior work would be done, meaning the asphalt, the site work, the post-construction site work, not constructed site work?
The parking lot.
So any landscaping, sidewalks, asphalt?
So any landscaping, sidewalks, asphalt, you mentioned irrigation for lawn and that type of stuff?
Yeah.
Is that something that's going to be included in this?
It was in the original and I think the site work came into 20400, I think, 400,000. You'll notice, I'll use an example, this picture that's up right now, where the council chambers is going is partly where a parking lot exists today. So not only are you losing that parking area, you're also losing the ability to use this as parking, so that becomes green space. So that's one of the more significant site improvements I'm asking to ask to occur. Then there's other alignments and configuration of how we park and how the traffic flows into and out of the site that are put into this bid as well. But those site improvements were all part of the regular.
Well, here's where I'm going with that. Couple things. To me, the two primary alternates that I would like to see personally is just that work and the garage. I think those are two that might be able to be looked at differently or maybe carved out for a time, who knows? But I also think by separating the bids, I think you really got three opportunities with this. I think you've got the reconstruction, the renovation, I think you've got the new construction and then you've got the exterior site work that we're just talking about because those are different, really, they're different groups of people that could or would do those. By separating them, it doesn't prohibit anyone from bidding on all three. It just opens up a door of opportunity for us. So if I want to bid on all of them, I'll go bid on all of them and I'll just make damn sure my pencil or whatever is sharp enough at the end that maybe I get them. So we're not grueling anyone out, but what we are doing is we are providing an opportunity for others to come in that otherwise probably aren't going to have an opportunity, won't bid on it. So I really, I feel very strongly personally that we need to at least have two, if not three, different bid packages that we look at.
I don't disagree with the benefits of opening up to more bidders. I think the biggest reservation and the biggest pause I would give is what was mentioned earlier. When you have multiple contractors, general contractors, which is what we're talking about here, we're not just talking about one general with different subs handling those separate trades, we're talking about three separate contracts working on one site. That gets very, very muddy in the construction world, especially with vertical construction of a building site. That's where I would just heed caution in doing that is you're going to, your contract liabilities escalate tremendously on everybody's end, the contractors end, the owners end, the architects.
We are going to know that. There's no downside in doing the three, in my opinion.
Well, that's okay to explain.
You're not going to know until you see the numbers, right? That's where it's going to augment at.
I'm talking from a construction administration standpoint.
No, I understand that, but there's an offset, right? Cost and risk, right?
But when there's differing opinions on whether it's going to help the cost or not, I think the cost will escalate when you break it out into three schedules, just like some contracts that we pulled, pulled out, also Bueller.
But you were there when we also had two of them tell us that it probably goes down.
And I also said I disagree with them then too.
I'm just telling you, that's what we've had though, right?
It is possible.
I'm questioning.
I wouldn't advise it, that's all I'm saying. It is possible, I wouldn't advise it. Take many of them.
Do we run into challenges with, so the site work? Does the site work change if, let's say, the garage were an alternate and the chambers were an alternate? So if, I don't know how to ask the question, but how can someone bid on the site work if we're not sure if we're awarding this or that? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Dad, I'm going to touch on that from our first go around.
Yeah, we had some discussions in the last week on that, you know? The last time we bid it out, we had, in particular, two alternates that I want to discuss, one and two. And one was enclosing the garage, two was the actual addition. But so site wise, they had a base plan with no addition, no enclosure. They had site, and then alternate one was the enclosure. So they had another complete site plan because they're blocking off one whole side. And then there was alternate two, which was the addition which blocked off. So they had another site plan just for alternate two. Well, then you also have the scenario, what if they took both alternates? That's a whole nother site plan and it, every alternate kind of added to the complexity of the next alternate and that's why we were kind of saying if we can make it simple and, you know, if the addition is base part of it, that removes one of those variables in there and just reducing those number of variables. But, I mean, there are some alternates that do make sense and that are, you know, worth going to put in.
Which ones do you think add to it?
I still, the garage alternate is not that hard of a two-site plans, but other than that, it's already an alternate on our plan. So I think bidding wise, we can do that separate. But if it's, I do think the simplicity is, if it's wanted as part of this project, to put it in the project.
Can you, for those of us that don't live in the construction world every day, we've talked about alternates and we've talked about different schedules. What is the difference?
Schedule is just, we're talking about bid packages. So this is bid separately, so it could be a different contractor doing each one. That's a schedule. An alternate is the actual work being performed.
And we may or may not do this piece.
And they bid the bid, the base bid, and then if one thing's an alternate, they will submit a separate amount, whether it's a deduct or an add, that, you know, that would cost. So it's, you have a number and you can either accept it or reject it.
Under the same one contractor's bid.
Yeah.
Those alternates.
One thought that I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're good?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. The site plan, I want to, this goes to you, Dad. Would it change, would it be an issue for the site plan if we had just the enclosure as a alternate, a bid alternate?
I mean, anybody that bids this can say, I can, I'll bid them all, but here's an alternate for you. This is how much it's going to cost, just like we did. And I, the other question I have, Pete, is what was the cost? Because I want to say it was over $600,000 was the original bid on that.
Okay, closure?
For the, was it only four? Yeah, okay.
But it was estimated at 200.
Two hundred and thirty or something.
It came in significantly.
But is that, would that be an issue as far as the site plan goes if we bid just that section as an alternate?
No, I don't think it's an issue. It would be a separate site plan because, you know, it would change how that site works. But to be honest, you know, that work's already done. You know, we did that on the last one, right? It's just.
The design work.
Yeah, the design work's done and I think that's not too difficult, the alternate. It would require like the site people to estimate it twice.
Yeah.
You know, they have to do it this way and then again this way.
But I guess I would, I think I am for bidding this as a package. And I would think that that would be a good alternate would be the enclosure. That's my opinion.
One more question, Councilman? Sure. The technology that we have and the technology that the construction community has with CAD drawings and with all this, I'm no expert in that, but it's come a long ways in the last 25 years. This seems real, like we're making it really difficult. And I don't know, every homeowner that's, every homeowner that's built a house in the last 30 years, I know this is bigger than that. We need to realize that. It's not the same. But they make these decisions personally, whether to add a garage on while they're going right through it. They don't make it a big deal, but it's dollars and cents and all of a sudden can't afford it. So I think if there's a contractor that wants it all in one month, we're going to see the number and that's going to tell the story. That's all I have.
Just one more quick question. Has it been discussed recently what the plan for City Hall would be if we move forward with this?
One idea to explore is once the bids come back and you see what those numbers are, is to utilize some of the remainder to tear down existing City Hall and build that out into a parking lot. Because there is no, there are no programmed dollars for that. And I, I just don't believe there's interest in some, for some of the budget.
Can you get a question from the audience, former Councilman?
Not a question, but a comment. When I got off the council six months ago, I told the public there were two things that really frustrated me or just something that didn't get done as I was leaving the council. One was the bike trail around the lake we weren't dying out. Second was the City Hall. Three years ago, we were this close, I mean, so close to putting this thing out for bids and very, and at that point, hundreds of hours between staff, architect, council members, the mayor, hundreds of hours I'd gone into planning that thing. We were so close to going out for bids in about March or April, three years ago, and for various reasons that didn't get done. And here we are, three years later, cost escalation. I know I flip flopped over the course of the various options that were presented in the meantime, but this to me has always been the most logical choice of action, move forward. So I'm imploring you guys, let's get this job done. I still have people asking me, knowing that I'm still in touch with the council, what's happening to City Hall? And I gotta say, I don't know. I mean, it's embarrassing for us, the community, but let's get this job done and move forward.
I would echo all of those comments and I think it's time to land the plane and I think we should bid this as a package as soon as the numbers come back.
Everything I would question is, do we want to leave the garage as an alternate?
Well, do you want to go councilman by councilman? Are we done discussing? Should we just?
We can't vote on it.
I don't think there's any harm in bidding as an alternate. That's what we did before. We know what the numbers came back before and so you can make your decision if you want to accept that alternate or not. I don't know that, for the garage part of it, I don't know that it creates any significant challenges to bid as an alternate. If there's some, if there is some sort of feeling that maybe that's not necessary. Now, before, you know, we bid the chambers as an alternate because I think there was some thought, we're not entirely for sure if this is what we want, we can do off-site, you know, do that later. I'm assuming based off the conversation, that sentiment has changed. Chambers is critical, we got to, we have to do that, but if there's some thought that the garage might not be necessary, then I would bid as an alternate and make the decision that it's coming.
Fokie dokie.
I like that, fokie dokie.
Hey, it's time to move on.
And are we making the motion to adjourn?
I would care of the clocks, then. Done, we're done. Future Councilmen's, and I do want to bring up.
No.
If they've been doing the direction, we seem to be divided on whether this can be a single bid or a double or. I think what we've given them is the idea to bring us back the best scenario to, we've given them the tools to go out with the engineers, the architects.
So I would go back to what we said in the beginning. We would like to explore the multiple schedule option.
Yes.
And have the leeway to bid it out, whatever is most advantageous. So if through the research it comes back that we're not going to gain anything by doing it that way, or hey, contractors are telling us absolutely, we've bid on this and we've bid on that. I guess what we're trying to get to is we don't want to have to bring anything back before we put this up to bid because it will delay the completion of the design and the bid documents. So.
Thank you, exactly what I was trying to say.
That will compare it. That's how I heard the conversation, but I don't know if I heard it correctly. So I need to know if I heard this correctly.
Everybody has general consensus of that. How are you going to, what discussions are you going to have? How are you going to have those discussions with contractors differently than what's occurred?
They're going to call them and talk to them.
Okay, so will we have, will they be able to bid the remodel and bid the?
That's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
Yes, okay.
Is visiting with some contractors, if we put the bid out this way, would you bid on it? If we put it out this way, would you bid on it? Yeah, I'd do both. Well, then maybe it does make sense to separate them out or, no, it doesn't, I don't, that doesn't work for me. You mentioned some other ways and we've said a lot of words since then, so I don't quite remember what you said.
Well, I think, would you bid on it is one question, but then also, do you think in this bid climate that would create more competition and lower costs or not? You know, to the point that we're trying to, we all agree on, we want this to come in as low as possible and we want the most competition to drive that cost down. So those are some of the things, you know, gauging some contractors and not just any contractor, they have to be a bondable contractor that can bond for their bid amount. And so, I mean, that alone limits the pool of people that would be putting in a bid on this project because not everybody's bondable to the tune of a couple million bucks on a rental only. There are a lot of people that do that kind of work, but that doesn't mean they're going to be able to get a performance bond for that amount. And they know whether they can or not and they know whether they're going to be of interest in this or not. So I think, I think having a few conversations, Ted's got some good connections in the construction community. He's actually had contractors reach out to him since we rejected the initial bid, asking, hey, you guys going to rebid that thing? So we're anxiously waiting to pick up the phone and get back to those folks, explore these options with them. But I do, we're on the same page. We want this thing packaged the most beneficial way for the city.
Can I follow up? Just a second. City Attorney Kerr, go ahead.
Yeah, I may be a little forward, but in the, assuming that I would probably, the city attorney's office would probably be a part of the discussion because when you're talking about different packages and different contractors and different contracts, there, you are entering into, not to say that there is a pros to it, but the cons are going to be the liability quagmire of who stops where and who's responsible for what and they deemed my door and, you know, that we already don't foresee in a general contractor situation, except for the general is ultimately responsible to coordinate all of the subs. Whereas in the other situation that you're talking about with packages, you know, we're just getting into, you know, not to say it can't be doable, but I would want to have conversations with Ted and the city manager, Public Works, just about how that would happen and the pros and cons of that. That's all I can say.
Yeah, two more questions. We need to get this wrapped up, Councilman Matt. What about the timing? What value is there in the timing of completion of renovations ahead of an addition? We heard that the other day too, right? That the renovation barring things like, potentially barring things like the suppression system, the new power unit or whatever. But what did we hear the other night or the other day? That the one individual thought the renovation could be done.
Yeah, three, four months.
Three to four months.
That doesn't mean a general could do the same thing. Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, yes.
If we wanted to implement a shorter turnaround time and a shorter completion date for the renovation, we could certainly do that. But I can tell you that will come at a cost too, that'll likely drive the bids up. Not it'd be a lot, but they will drive the bids up higher. If they've got separate completion dates for different components on the site, it'll cost more. It's just the nature of contractor work and how they would put cost to that work. If they have a longer duration to do as they wish amongst the site, that gives them all the more latitude, all the more leeway, the costs come down a bit.
But in fairness, we'd be that. we'd be that that timeframe, it, and the cost going up is really more relevant if you've got somebody that bid the whole thing. Person who told me it says, this part I could do. Right?
Yeah, if you bid at separate schedules, then then that's obviously not an issue. You'd have two separate contractors working on the two separate.
Because only at some point you have to decide if there's any value to it. The value literally being in there in four months, five months, whatever versus a year. You know, I think it's an issue for you guys.
I mean, if there's a way to get into that facility, um, whether it's separate schedules or one general and, you know, they get the, the rent out done, certainly that would be desirable. Um, but we also don't want to be intermingling staff with contractors and, um, I think it creates headaches. Not that they're not insurmountable. And I don't, again, I don't live in the construction world, so I'm not quite sure how the new addition, the construction of that certainly will have some sort of impact on the existing building based off of the electrical and, you know, those kinds of things. So you'd still be disrupting work, right? And you'd still be using the old building for council meetings until the chamber is done. And then you've got staff going back and forth. Not that you can't figure those things out. I mean, you certainly can, but if, if we know that we've got 12 months, then it's 12 months, right? And right now it's just unknown when we're, when we're moving out. So we can accommodate, you know, whatever it is that works best for contractors to, to get us in there in the appropriate way. You know, it's, it's kind of like the ice arena. You know, there's, there's some things that we're going to have to do some overlap on owner provided items with the contractor and, it just creates some messiness that if we can avoid it, it's better to avoid it for everyone. So you can do your work when you need to, we can do ours, but I think that can all be figured out as we go through the process.
Yeah, it can.
If I may, if I'm, I'm sorry, he's, if I may offer just some conversation that happened to first go around regarding some phasing. Uh, with the timeframe that we're, that we're looking at to get this out, we are bumping up against the spring construction starts. And if this, I, I could envision that if this were under one contractor for the whole package, they can start putting to get, you know, start excavation for the new addition and start the addition. And currently, there's some asbestos abatement issues that have to happen on the existing building. So there's some, there's some finite coordination that was in those packages or in those descriptions for that work. Contractors will need to be in a little bit. Abatement comes in, does their work, contractor can come back in after the building's clear. Do some of that interior remodel while they're, while they're putting together the, the addition. And if things time out right, um, as, as you let them schedule their, their work, you know, you get the framers completed in the remodel area and will the addition be ready for framers inside? Or maybe those framers do the outside framing work? Drywallers come in behind, you know, you, you try to get your general to, to use his resources as efficiently as possible. So there is an efficiency to have it all under one, one, one package to move those, those sub trades from one area to the next. So, um, I just didn't want to forget, you know, we could, there is already an offset start that can be built into this project from getting started in the spring on new construction, but also the abatement work has to happen before a lot of the interior remodel work gets done. So there's an offset to some of those trades already that's, that's somewhat in there. And one other comment to the schedule, uh, I believe it was just alluded to. There are some concerns about some of that crossover of infrastructure. You know, if we're pulling electrical over, if we're pulling data over, you know, where, where is that line of delineation where one's contract stops and one contract starts? And a little bit of a concern there, and that does extend to the site. Um, because there are some, there is some sight lighting that's going on. So who make, who goes where and makes connections that I think our goal is to make it very clear when it goes out to the contractors to bid. So, um, that kind of phasing the work would have to be considered.
Councilman Buehler?
Thank you. Uh, just a real quick question. Heath, when did we bid? We bid this before? What month did we bid that? Is that 2020? 2022 was the and it was, uh, June, July.
Which I think, I think this puts us in a way better bid climate by far. I really do. I think, I think we're going to be surprised at what we see. That's my point. I think we need to, you were done with.
Yeah.
My point, I think we need to move forward and trust the experts and have them bring us the, the tools we need to look forward with this. Get it out ahead. Let everybody move forward. Don't hear any rejections. Manager Mac, I am going to ask you a question if you're fine with this, because it was in your weekly or biweekly report a couple weeks ago. For proposal or some information by, uh, Public Works Director Von I and Chief Rowland, some information on that fire station.
Yeah. We can address it in a very high level way. Um, wanted to show you, um, the, the city owned site.
Pete's got that one.
Out by the ice arena that, um, we think would be suitable for a future east side fire station. And I will let, our Chief Rowland and Public Works Director Von I speak further to it.
Yeah, really Public Works involvement has just been helping Chief Rowland, uh, explore different site options. We've got a handful of city parcels out on the east side that we've looked at, cost estimating, putting bill in, making them a buildable pad. And then I let Chief Rowland talk to the benefit of this particular location and some of the nuances or necessities that would come along with it.
So just briefly here, um, I really like this area that, um, about the public director, director, Ethan I talked about in City Manager Mac. Uh, this is First Avenue. This is a picture that actually came from Community Director, um, Brandon Hanton, showing 28th Street. It circles around. Of course you have Jeremy Avenue just, just to the north of the ice arena. It's a little older picture. You get the justification that J and J actually owns the land just directly to the north there. And the land where the city building, the fire department building would be on is the 1.5 acres of land just south and west of the current ice arena. Uh, the great thing is we could use the, the parking lot even for a little bit of, uh, practice and training aspects as well. Um, but alluding to what City Manager Mac talked about, 31st and Third are a really big component to this, this project out here, if and when we go forward with it. I can tell you that if we go to the next slide quick here, this kind of just shows a rectangle, 12,000, 12,000 square foot building of 60 by 200 building, uh, about 4,000 square feet of living space, office, training, uh, and then also about probably, you know, six to maybe, uh, 8,000 square feet of bay. And that bay would be consisting of three different bays with, uh, some different buildings in there. Um, essentially, we would go to the northeast part of the, the city. If you go to the next slide, I know it's kind of hard to show, but if you kind of show where that, uh, where it's, where it's at there, 28th Street is actually going to connect all the way up to Third Avenue, correct?
Yep.
Oh, Heath, and that would be our alternate out to Third. So if you want to zoom back out again quick. Maybe, uh, I'll have, uh, Adam kind of show the, the, the response from that area. So if he goes up to, to Third Avenue, you want to just kind of use the cursor and show that. So there's Third, and we go east all the way over, excuse, west all the way over to 19th Street. And then I don't have the, the rest of the going up north to, uh, 14th Avenue and all the way back to 27th Street. In a nutshell, the furthest part of the northeast, uh, would cut our response times down to four minutes and 11 seconds.
So what are they at currently?
If we were to zigzag out on 28th, it'd be about six minutes, 11 seconds.
No, I mean, where are they at from Fire Station One?
Downtown Station One, we're about nine to 10 minutes. Maybe even closer to 11 in some cases. Uh, but if we were to go to the southeast part of the city, where if we go past the interstate and highway 212, uh, excuse me, on 212, pass the interstate, exit 177 and go to Pheasant Ridge, Ridge Industrial Park over there, let's just say Benchmark Foam or Nutting, our response times using 31st Street, going down to 212 and then over to the east. We can go to Redland Center, Terry, or wherever. That whole area is three minutes or less. So I think, um, I'm on board with that location. Again, it's just a matter of, of following through with, with some improvements to the roads.
Chief Rowland, those numbers you just gave us were hip, 31st Street and Third Avenue.
Yes.
When they're constructed, yes.
Yeah, if, if it's not constructed, the improvements, we're putting about two minutes more on the response time.
Which is still eliminating four to five minutes from Station One.
Absolutely. Yep. The, uh, the kicker is, is Third and 31st. We've done some preliminary estimates on those engineering staff out. It's going to take a good chunk of money to get one or both done and to the tune of five to 10 million apiece. Uh, cause they're, it's a full mile, each one of them, a full rural section converted to a city street section. It's, uh, it's, it's not inexpensive. We're finding in a hurry here. So, um, but definitely the numbers that are, they're a part of the discussion. And, you know, a requirement that I think the chief would want to have done in tandem with, uh, citing of a fire station out there, at least in timing, uh, being in perspective of making sure that the, the roads come at the same time as the fire station being built, if not before.
I think you're spot on there. I, the one other component, 28th Street that actually is going to connect to Third Avenue. If we were to utilize that and it was done and improved, uh, before, we really wouldn't have the, need the corner of, you know, from 28th Street to 31st Street down to First Avenue, that 90 degree section wouldn't be needed. But I don't know if that's probably the best case for planning for our, our city to not do the full improvement.
It's, it's definitely a possibility that would, would go in line with building roads to sustain existing development. Now that corner would obviously eventually be to be built out, but
At some point then.
Uh, the function of it now would, would be mainly for the industrial uses that are out there on those two parcels to the north, east and northwest.
My assumption would be a four or five million dollar saving probably and not in the building, you know, so, or roads.
It's related to 28th that will run up to Third. That's in the development agreement that was recently approved for Valley View phased, or excuse me, Lake Swille Creek Phase Two. So they've got a two-year timeline to build 28th out to Third for that development. The developer does.
So Councilman Tupper, I do like that spot. It is a good spot.
Councilman Dan first? Question and comment. Did I hear you say that each one of those miles would be roughly 10 million dollars?
Between five and 10, yes.
Those are numbers that we got today. High level numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a.
That's why you only get six.
Yeah.
If we didn't do that.
Go back to talks to you.
If we didn't put that and say, that's where I was taking it around it, at what point in time would the city need to do someone towards two, three?
Right now it's been developer driven and, um, so if you recall, again, going to the 28th and portion of Third, it's all planned to be built out with the next phase of the Lake Swille Creek. As the development is driving the need for that. But we're going to have an awkward developed, built out section of Third. And then non-built and non-built on either side of it. So it's gonna, we can continue to go on the developer driven timeline, but it's going to keep getting pieced together like that as development occurs adjacent to those two roads. Uh, or it'd be an initiative that the city takes on, if we have the funds, and then perform a formal assessment project where we build the seven million, eight million, whatever it is, the road and assess those costs back to the adjacent property owners. Some of those costs, we couldn't start recouping until those properties are annexed, like north of Third and east of 31st. So there might be some, quite a amount of time before we see that money back. And it'd have to be fronted by us, of course.
Especially on the east side of 31st, unless there could be some kind of agreement reached with the property owner and.
I don't know if anyone in this room has the answer to this, but if the city were to, um, implement a front footage assessment, do you still then assess for the cost of new infrastructure? Do you get what I'm asking? Christian, do you get what I'm asking?
Yeah, I'd say yes.
Yes. Cause the, the front footage assessment is typically applied to existing urban street sections. And those folks are getting charged that front foot assessment for the maintenance upkeep of that existing road. Then the assessment would be for new roads that haven't been built yet to the city stand.
So the only other question I have is that conceptually is, is, so if I'm coming in from, I think you said it's 28th.
28th Street off of Will.
Now my 36 million dollar ice arena tucked back behind the fire station, right?
We'd make it build it low to the ground.
You'll still see.
That true? That would be.
Conceptually, yes, exactly. That would be the
That would be.
building you would see as you turn that corner.
So would you, would, would the main entrance then to the ice eventually come off of Third and First?
No, I don't think you'd have to. I, I think right now the main entrance, of course, is coming south onto First. I, I don't see why I could see it back up. A southeast corner of that parcel right now.
Wait, there's First. I wonder when that gets finished and somebody searches on Google or the ice screen is going to know what road it's going to take me to. I bet you have a lot of them getting taken at Third and First. You have a question? So that's six or nine personnel. Is that for a full fire station?
Nine would be for a full fire station. Two, three to six would be for, oh, three for sure. Just.
Sorry, ambulance service.
Yeah.
So there's, there's some thoughts on that. This is a popular conversation around this table, but, um, we have $10 million that can get the streets done for a fire station. But then that means we don't do the city hall then, right? Or we just keep the current one we have. I mean, that's, that's part of this conversation, because by looking at the new numbers that just came in, that's going to be a challenge to get done for a fire station in three years.
So just to speak to that point a little bit, and I just didn't. So when the bond was issued, and I recognize that it, there were different people sitting at the table. The intent to the community was 10th Avenue, City Hall and the street facility. And you can certainly swap those dollars around with CIP and, um, you know, if you want to say we're going to put all 10 million towards these roads, I mean, you can, you can legally figure out a way to do that. But that's a little bit of bait and switch to the community on what the bond was issued for. And and, you know, they, they may very well support that. And that's, you know, we, we think this is a new need, but I would just caution, trying to be creative with the dollars that we have, because it was sold in the community. These are the things we want to accomplish with it. But that's just, just some advice.
There are a lot of them out.
Yeah.
Yes. So then what percentage do we have to put in the street department if that's what we're telling the city we're going to use?
I don't know that you have to put a percentage to. I don't know that you have to put a percentage too. I think, I think you have said, these are the things we want to accomplish with it. When the bond was issued for the wellness center, there was also a desire to do the ice arena at the same time, and there wasn't enough money to do it. So you kept back whatever, you know, that, what was it? Five million, yeah, some five million dollars and said someday in the future, we're going to use this towards the ice arena. So I just, I don't want to see you all getting, you know, into some kind of public debate about what those dollars were intended for or what, I mean, it's easy to change the narrative. That's what you want to do, for sure, and we can help work through that, but yeah.
Councilman Buehler? Thank you. Uh, this is for Don, if you don't, Don Rowland, Chief Rowland. Just a question. If you had, if you could put this anywhere you wanted, no matter who's got it or what the cost would be, where would you put it? What location would you love to have this at?
I like this area.
Do you?
I think it's got good opportunities. I would add that from my perspective as the fire chief, I think the best use of this money is to get Los Firegoes City Hall done immediately. That's, that would be my priority. I want to be part of the discussion as we move forward. But I think the priority one is getting the city hall built, in any way we can.
Was that your comment, Don?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, John Rowland.
Thank you, Chief Rowland.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Buehler.
Anything else on that? Yeah, we'll move forward. Any other future council items? Any public comment? We have no reason to go into executive session.